He was trying to log in now, okay. All right. First, let me do a quick sound check, council, if you can give me a thumbs up if you can hear me. Okay, we'll start our meeting off with a graph.
I heard your question.
You hear me, great. Okay, so, welcome to our Tuesday, December 7th, council workshop being held remotely. We're in for our quick Governor Inslee's orders here. So the order in 20-28-15 regarding the OPMA remains in effect. It requires public meetings and hearings to be held remotely, but the option of also holding an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing if certain conditions are met. At the present time, the City of Liberty Lake has determined not to hold an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing. So we are going to kick off our workshop. We'll do a quick roll call and sound check for the council. I know still have a couple people dialing in. But we'll start here on my list, we've got Mayor Protem.
President.
Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, here, Mayor.
See quite yet. Councilmember Severs. I see him, looks like he's still connecting audio. I will circle back, make sure we can hear him. Councilmember Dunn is out for business. Councilmember Kurtz. Present. And we've been advised since the election was certified on November 23rd, just to make note that Holly Woodruff, though she was the winner with the votes in the November 2nd election, is obviously not joining us as she is ineligible to to be, take her off. It looks like Severs may still, I see his face and still says connecting to audio. There. Councilmember Severs, you're in, I see you.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Awesome, all right, so just to recap, we have Councilmember Fuller, Councilmember Severs, Councilmember Kurtz, and we will, do we want to temporarily excuse Councilmember Langford and excuse Councilmember Dunn for business? And then we'll just note when Councilmember Langford joins us. No formal motion on that since this is workshop or not. For both Councilmembers Langford and Dunn, do we want to make a formal motion?
Yes, to make a motion. I think we've done that in the past, so we can just make a roll call.
Yeah, but I didn't know, I know you wanted to make it more formal, so I just wanted to give you the option.
All right, very good.
Okay. All right, so we will, we will do the more formal one during the meeting, okay? And like I said, when I see Councilmember Langford come on, we will note approximately when he was able to join us. So we are diving back into the budget again, right, tonight. We left off a couple weeks ago after page 62. So that leaves us starting page 63 with the municipal library. I don't see Joanne on here, though I think most everything for the library that she had information on was around the capital facilities plan, which we talked about last week and in the meantime, moving forward with that. So page 63 is your summary for the municipal library. We've got the COLA increase for salaries and wages. There are some small changes with regards to some part-time positions moving to full-time. They have actually, Kyle, jump in, correct me if you need to, those positions have decided for now to stay part-time, but the difference was about $14,000 if I remember correctly. So we opted on the side of caution in case service levels need to be changed mid-year to leave those as possibly, possibly moving to full-time. If they don't move to full-time, then they just stop, we'll have that in there just in case they do go to full-time. So they may have any questions or comments.
Did you see me? Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. I just have one question on that page. As I look at the part-time employee counts, it looks like we're adding, going from two to four on the library tech, but then we're going from three to zero on the library associate for a negative one. Does that make sense? Am I reading that right?
Well, yeah, details escaped me, but we are, we were moving. If you look at the totals, we're losing a part-time and gaining a full-time. And that was the comment I was making, is that there's time, but for now they're staying part-time. But this gives us the option through the year if we need to increase the service levels due to volume or whatnot, we can go ahead and make that change.
So it offsets the full-time, got it, thank you.
The problem. Any other questions on that summary page for the library? Yeah, Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I do, I want to see, know what I had here. Is it under general use, the library budget is based on property taxes anticipated each year? But don't we use a percentage on that?
Kyle can answer that better than I can, it's by ordinance.
Correct, yeah, so there is a, there's a formula that we use. We don't collect a specific tax for, like, we don't have like a library district that we collect the tax on. So we do have a formula that is identified by ordinance that calculates this number every year based on our property tax income each year.
What their, your percent, one or a half percent, something like that.
So yeah, the standard kind of statewide is 50 cents per $1,000 of assessed valuation. So that's kind of our baseline that we use.
That's where we started, I think it went to a percentage at some time, but it's there for that. That'll stem from about 10 or 11 years ago when we were going through cuts and we needed the library to have better, a more predictable calculation going forward for, for what their revenue side was going to be. So a little history there. Okay, so if there's no more questions on the summary page, we can go to page 60, 64 for the five-year comparison. Were there any questions on the detail with regards to the library budget on page 64? Councilmember Fuller. You're on mute.
Sorry. I just have highlighted again on this page, like all the others, the substantial increase in the benefits side of things. If we had a chance to.
Yeah, certainly, so on that, so what we do when we account for new FTEs or potential change in open enrollment designations, we always budget for what's called full-family medical. That is the most expensive coverage that the city offers in anticipation of, you know, having the potential of all these new employees actually select that option. So that's that major increase. The likelihood of everybody selecting that option is low, but we do need to account for that possibility. And so that, I mean, that could be as much as, you know, 20, 20, 2,000 a year for a single employee if they are opting for the, you know, full-family medical, you know, spouse and, you know, two-plus children.
Okay, fair enough, I have one more question on that. If you go down to the bottom of the page, the library travel and 4300 and library training 4900, under the comments section, it has the same description. So it made me wonder if those should be combined or if the comments section is not accurate.
They go hand in hand, Kyle can tell you the difference between the two.
Correct, so the trainings would be the actual cost of the conference or the event itself. And then when you're looking at training, you have travel, lodging, meals. So some of those ancillary costs that not, are not directly tied to maybe a, a cost of attending the, the, I guess the, the amount that it takes to actually get into the conference itself.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
Any other questions on that page for the library? All right, we'll go ahead and jump forward to page 65. Excuse me, more general fund, we've got library building with utilities and whatnot, we've got furniture, computers and equipment with regards to some upgrade, possible updated changes that could be eligible for ARPA reimbursement, furniture and such. And that's really about the gist of it for that page is, and then the summary below. Does anybody have any questions on that one? Let's, one, twice. Page 66 is just the rest of the summary for that. So we can jump over to operations and maintenance. Page 67, we've got the general summary page. Again, you'll see some changes there with regards to the positions, full-time, part-times. A lot of seasonal is going to full-time. And I know Jen, Jen and, and or Trevor can answer some of those questions as they come up. Do you guys have anything in particular just on the summary page? Or do we want to get into the detail on following pages? To the detailness. All right, so page 68. So I don't know, you guys have any questions? We've, we have in here adding a facilities lead for next year. And if you guys had any questions about that, or if you want, Jen, if you could, you just give a quick description of what the facilities lead will take on and why we're trying to consolidate this work. You guys have any questions?
Yeah, this position will basically oversee the maintenance and repairs and day-to-daily duties of the care of the actual facilities and buildings to include the buildings and our parks. So for example, we need to re-roof the pavilion shelter next year. That position will oversee the contract, the contract, the purchase procurement, bringing the project to council, and then overseeing and implementing the, the work. We've been using parks maintenance staff for that, and it really has been a struggle to keep up with facility needs with our parks maintenance staff when they have their hands full with parks maintenance, particularly since we've struggled to fill seasonal positions. So we feel like this is going to be a huge benefit to go ahead and implement some of those asset management projects that we have queued up in the CFP.
This is just to follow on to some of the other other adjustments we've made with regards to getting the work with the right people and having somebody be able to, to be able to do it on a repeatable basis rather than somebody trying to remember how to do it each time. So what we do, as we grow up as a city, we're in, more in need of those kind of issues. Do we have any questions on that one? Go ahead, Councilmember Fuller.
Sorry, Mayor, yes, thank you. I guess my question goes, maybe goes back to page 67. I know you turned the page already, but I'm looking at the full-time and part-time positions. And sorry, I missed my note here, but as I was going through the budget further on, there's two sections, one regarding stormwater, another one regarding aquifer protection. And it looks like we have a part-time, we've budgeted for salary, or it looks like a part-time in those sections. I just wondered if that's, is that additional part-time, part-time, that's not part of this section? Or how's that, how is that being looked at?
I, I'm not following what you're asking, so what are, what are you saying? And I apologize, I'm missing that page, I'm missing page 67. Is it on page 67?
No, no, so further on, further on in the budget, on, on page 109, it talks about stormwater and then page 113, it talks about aquifer protection. And there's budgeted monies for salary and wages and assumes, I'm assuming it's a part-time.
I, I can explain that, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. What that is, is the streets department. Okay, so let's see, how's the best way to explain this? The streets department consists of a handful of employees and those employees' salaries are divided up by a ratio that RJ and I came up with a while back that, that half of their salaries come out of the streets fund, fund 110. And then 25% of their salaries come out of the APA fund and 25% of their salaries come out of the stormwater fund for a total of the 100%. That's what that is, there's no part-time. It's actually our streets guys, but because they do APA work and they do some stormwater work, we're able to bill some of that, some of that salary and wages to those APA and stormwater as well as streets.
So it's like a line item budget to cover the cost?
Yeah.
The, the personnel is identified on 67. Correct?
Yeah, and I'm so sorry, I don't have page 67, so Kyle.
That would be, so, so, sorry, Councilmember Fuller, that'd be identified on the, on the streets fund 110, 77, I want to say.
Okay, so that's, that's all I'm after, is, you're right. So you're just identifying the funding in a different section, basically in our budget, but the personnel is captured right here in this, but this section of the budget.
That, what, what should be captured in this section is only parks maintenance workers, not the streets workers.
Right.
So I'm not sure what you're seeing on there, since I can't see what you're seeing. But the streets, the streets workers are actually budgeted out on page 70, 70. Yeah, they shouldn't be, they should, they're in a whole separate fund than the general fund, which we're discussing right now with parks. So it's just parks crew. If it's on there, it probably shouldn't, if there's something streets on there, it probably was a mistake and shouldn't be on there. The streets is its own.
Operations and maintenance at the top of the page, I just assumed it was that.
Oh, yeah.
And so, and I'm sorry, both of you, so yeah, under the position summary, you will see parks, streets and facilities maintenance for an employee count.
Right.
I do apologize, that is a little confusing because we should have the streets identified under the streets fund. But this is kind of a catch-all for, you know, operations and maintenance, I suppose.
Okay, right, yeah, thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
Always good to ask those questions. So is there any other detailed questions for page 68? Mostly salaries and wages, and then at the end, starts in some supplies. Not hearing any, I'll go and jump to page 69. Again, a lot, a lot of supplies, different professional services, is there, if there's anything that jumps out to anybody? We can certainly address it, Councilmember Kurtz.
Just had a question on It looked like there was a decrease for the ballfields, and I just wondered if, given that perhaps this summer there may be more usage because it's not 2020 with COVID. That's a good ballpark estimate for it, or do you guys anticipate the usage or?
So that number has kind of evened itself out since the initial year we had the ballfields. And you can see there's been quite a difference each year with ballfield maintenance. The first couple of years, it was quite, quite more costly to get the ballfields up and running. So this is the actual infield dirt, the clay mounds. So we've kind of evened out. And so while we were at 15,000 appropriated last year, we're only spent, we've only spent at the time of this print, 8,000, almost 9,000. So we actually are starting to kind of even out and find our pace. And we feel like 10,000 should be about the pace. The, the operation side of this cost and these expenses doesn't, didn't really have an effect on the ballfields because, with COVID, because we still had to maintain them anyway, even during COVID. So COVID didn't really affect that number. This is purely just finding a kind of a flatline basis where we're going to even out in the incoming years.
Okay, thanks Jen, it makes more sense that it's like the dirt, like the actual.
Yeah.
Versus like.
Yeah, the actual stuff, the rakes and the fertilizer and the, that kind of thing.
Thanks Jen.
Yep.
Any detail, questions on the detail on page 69? Nope, okay, 11 over to 70. We are still in operation and maintenance, so we have, again, we have another, like, Councilmember Kurtz pointed out, there's a couple others with decreases. And then you'll see some other big jumps for different things. Jen, I would like to ask, ask you, near the bottom of the page is where you have our, the fuel tracking software. If you wouldn't mind just giving us a little lowdown on that, so the council understands what, what that is all about and how we're going to be using it.
Yeah, so that came through our audit from, I believe it was our 2020 audit. The auditors are requiring us to reconcile our fuel usage, including our fuel deliveries, our fuel use and the, how we monitor it. And right now, the system is fairly basic and archaic. We don't have any kind of a digital system or software that actually tracks where this fuel, excuse me, where this fuel goes, who's using it, when they're using it. So not only is it for reconcile purposes, but this software will also track security. So we'll be able to assign a code to each staff member, then they can only use that code during certain hours. So it will control any theft. We haven't had any theft, but it's kind of inevitable that it very well could happen at some point. So this will protect us, and, and that was a concern of the auditors as well. How, how are we, how do we know we don't have fuel disappearing at four o'clock in the afternoon or at midnight? Yeah, we do lock it up. But that's not a sure-fire security, so this software will tell us if we're losing fuel when we don't want it, when we don't want to be losing fuel. It will track who's pulling the fuel out of the tank with the code that they're using. And then if an employee quits or leaves, we'll be able to delete that code. It's similar to our alarm system here in City Hall.
I'm starting to go through that, it's a little bit larger expense, but like you said, and it's something that came out of an audit. So it's, and it's, it's something we need to be putting in place. And I know we talked about some of those couple facility plan items that are on here during our last meeting, so I probably figure there's a little more follow-up on that. So nobody has any further questions, there we go, Mayor Protem.
Yes, on page seven, the top three items are Orchard Park, Rock Hill Parks and Indian Trail. Professional services, what are the professional services? What goes into that?
That's if we have to call an electrician out to repair some electrical, if we have to call a plumber out to repair water lines in the, in the shelters. That is, if we have to call the arborist out to trim the trees. Any kind of a contractor or vendor that comes to the park and does something to the park for us that we can't do.
Brilliant, thank you.
Great questions. All right, page 71, not a whole lot on here. It does have for equipment for the fleet rotation. If you guys have any follow-up questions on that, and then we have the summary. So if there's no additional questions on page 71, we can jump over to the all other funds section. All right, so then let me jump into American Rescue Plan Act Fund Resources. Kyle, you just want to give a quick high level on how we're managing that? And let's go through this first page and the, and page 74 for us.
Absolutely, so what you see here is, under 2022 proposed, you see an allocation of all of the funds that we're going to get. That allows council more flexibility when it comes to identifying either different purchases or different programs that council wants to fund. So we're not coming back to you for a budget amendment every time you make a decision. And so any expenditure that goes into this fund has to be approved by council anyways. So as we get through 2022, as situations arise where we could, you know, implement a program or, or have an expenditure covered by ARP, we have the flexibility to do so.
Even though we have to remind me, remind me, Kyle, through the end of 2024 to allocate and then 2025 to spend? Or does it move back?
So yep, so December 31st of 2024 to commit the funds. And then December 31st, 2026 to actually spend those funds.
All right, well, good, good option to keep it all, when you're good, Councilmember Fuller and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. So a little over 3 million. What are we doing with it in the meantime?
So it is sitting in our, so it's a, the state treasury has a local government investment pool that local governments contribute excess funds to. So it is sitting in that just generating, you know, a nominal amount of interest at this time.
Okay.
No Bitcoin, Councilmember Fuller. Mayor Protem, you had a question too?
Thank you, Mayor. Kyle, this is for you. In the past, several of the AWC meetings in the past, the one question is always coming up is how the auditors are going to look at this. Is there any update on that? Because what was coming across this last year was, oh, don't worry about it, go ahead. But the question still comes up from a lot of mayors in different cities that, well, that's fine and dandy, but what happens once we spend it? And then send the auditor say, no, you couldn't, you shouldn't have done that.
So with, so the, the original deadline was October 31st. They pushed that out because they didn't have a mechanism in place to really implement this audit procedure for the ARP fund. So the updated timeline is April 30th. And what they're gonna request is basically any documentation in what's called the interim final rule that the US Treasury put out regarding expenditures of these funds and how each expense ties to that interim final rule. So what we're going through with, so we're going to have documentation that ties every single expense back to wording in that interim final rule and have it ready for the auditor to document. This was the expenditure, this is the wording in the interim final rule released by the US Treasury that ties this expenditure to an eligible use. And it's going to be a headache for them, honestly. It is going to be a big headache for them, but, but well, we are going to have everything buttoned up because we don't, we don't need to take any chances with any of that, so.
Yeah, there was a really good, once I finally got into some more of the National League of Cities City Summit sessions, there was a really good one on that. They actually had to cut them off after an hour and a half, really detailed. But a lot of, a lot of good information and it really focused a lot on what our current financial policies are. And I think we've shown year over year that our current financial policies are really sound based on our audits. And so that's going to be really, really coming into play and, and progress.
Thank you.
Any other questions on ARPA funds? All right, hearing none, now we're up to street operations and maintenance funds.
Councilmember Fuller had one more question, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I'll just ask, is there anything we can do with the money? Let it sit there collecting dust?
We, I've thought a lot about this. We can, the, the issue is liquidity. And so there are different options that we can, there are a bounty of options that we can use as investments. We have specific policies in our, in our, so our financial policies dictate, you know, maximum liquidity, absolute risk adverse. But I am absolutely open i- if council is to investigating some alternatives to the LGIP, and, and I've actually had some conversations with councilmember Severs about this as well. And so feel free to jump in and kind of expand on some of the conversations we've had, maybe.
I'd be happy to. So long story short is today's interest rate environment, especially on fixed income and, and really safe type assets, you're just not going to do a whole lot better. The state's fund is, is, the, the issue is, is time horizon, liquidity and safety. We were to take these funds and put them in sort of to an equities-type environment, try to grow them better. Sure they might, they all. I'm sure they might, they also may, uh, may tank in the, for the next three years. And the fixed income side of assets these days is just, it's just dismal mess. Um, bond markets, we all know we're in a really low interest rate environment and so long story short is. Oftentimes the, the headache that you're talking about going through, um, to take it out of the state's, uh, fund. And go try to find something like a one year, two year, three year CD. Um, we're going from, okay, today, maybe we're gonna get point two percent out of the state's fund. And what we do, we're gonna move it up to point three percent, uh, in some sort of CD market. Um, and, and amount of time and effort it took to do that made, it is not even be worth it. Uh, it, it, it turns my stomach more than, um, you can probably imagine. And, uh, but it's, uh, it's just where the world we live in. So that's, Kyle and I have had a number of, uh, conversations about it. RJ and I had a number of conversations about it and they're just, for a three year time horizon money, it's just, there's not much else we're gonna find to do with it. Short of, if, if you wanna go try to find a CD, but then we're, we're actually adding additional risk to the funds, uh, even by going with a CD. Because we're talking, uh, dollar amounts well above the FDIC insured, uh, amounts. So you'd be talking about not one CD, but in this case, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar maximums. Uh, divided into three million dollars, so we'd be going into, uh, to go get twelve CDs. Uh, with the, with, with the money to, to try to potentially grow it an extra, what, ten thousand bucks over three years? So, long story short, it's just, uh. It's just a tough spot to be in with the world's current, uh, financial markets. Not, not that I've got all the answers or, 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 you know, again, if somebody else has an idea that, that maybe Kyle and I haven't thought of. By all means, please.
Absolutely.
Bring it up.
Thank you, I appreciate that explanation. I just had to ask the question. I couldn't, couldn't help myself and looking for ways to make money, of course, but. And just one other thought, uh, something you just said, Kyle, about it's gonna be a headache for the auditing section, part of this. Wait, when the time comes. Um, it made me wonder if. It may be approached similar to the PPP funds, if you are under a certain limit. And they are just gonna bypass you with the audit and say, you're good to go. So, maybe something like that will happen to, I mean, three millions is a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of things, maybe not.
That is a great point. We are what is identified as a non entitlement unit. We are a city under fifty thousand. We have a completely different set of rules than the city of Spokane, Spokane Valley. And so, uh, to your point that they, that may very well happen. We'll get a much better idea come May, once this first round of review, uh, has happened. And then we'll be able to, um, make some determinations, you know, based on, based on what we see from there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so is there any questions? Jumped into streets, operations and maintenance, are there any questions on the first summary page? Now we get into the detail, starting pages, some of these seventy six, it's kind of embedded in the last line there. Any questions about, um, this first page here is all about our utility tax, cable tax. Gas tax, um, and then we get into their shared revenues, um, from the state.
What page is that there?
Uh, well, it's kind of embedded, it, it's right after six, right after seventy five.
Got it.
No questions on that page? Okay, we'll go ahead to seventy seven. Again, more information there about the utility tax. Uh, we've got some, the salaries for streets. Salties and wages for streets, excuse me, and other benefits on there. And then we're into roadway supplies. I have several questions when this first came out about that last section there with regards to supplies and things. Um, which is why we've got a little bit more detailed information to hopefully, um. Hopefully it makes sense to everybody, but if you guys have any questions, because there was some pretty wide swings. In that last section with regards to supplies and whatnot. There's no questions, though, we can go on to the next page. I guess my question would be, um, Jen, given that, um, today, well, yesterday was really our. First big snow event. Do we have any anticipation of what next year, beginning of next year is gonna look like at all? So I know we're having some issues with some equipment, are we gonna? Need to look at something additional with regards to equipment that we hadn't, hadn't planned on?
No, I don't think so. I think that what the issues we went through yesterday were just startup, um, bugs, bugs in the system. Uh, trying to get the kinks out, so no, I, I think we're good.
No more questions on that, we can move on to page seventy eight. Again, more roads and street supplies, um, some bigger swings, but hopefully the descriptions in here. I'll answer most everybody's questions. Maybe just a second to look over that, see if you have any questions to need answered. Page seventy nine, still on streets. No big changes here. With, except for, uh, some of our bigger equipment. No questions there? All right, I like these nights. All right, page eighty. Um, big swing in our capital expenditures, again, it was, um. All in the CFP with regards to additional, uh, equipment. Um, we have the rapid flushing beacons, uh, in there. No questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Fuller.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Jen, that was too easy, I've got one question for you. Can you identify who SW is for the crowd, please?
Steven Williams.
Thanks for inviting him to the party, I appreciate it.
All right. Okay, so our next one is page eighty one, Parks and Art Fund Resources. Like, and we've talked about this a little bit, um, when we went through the CFP. They've got their strategic plan in there with their budget, um, also hoping for some of this being covered by some donations. Um, it's not a lot different from last year, so maybe I have any questions? On this fund? Okay. Alright, so I'll skip the detail page on that one, Tourism Promotion Fund Resources. Kyle, just real quick, um, just as a reminder for the public who's here and maybe some of our newer council members. What the Tourism Promotion Fund is, um, you know, it's a pass through, but I'm just gonna, if you wanna give a quick high level.
Absolutely, so the Tourism Promotion Fund was created to, uh, obviously increase. Uh, tourism activities within Liberty Lake. And it is funded by a hotel motel tax of two percent, uh, on each, you know. Night stayed at, at a qualifying facility. And so, yeah, this is a pass through and this is a pocket of money for, uh, entities that do participate in. Allowable uses for tourism promotion. So you have different, let's say like, you know. The hub or the rotary, you have different nonprofits that, that drive, um, activity and commerce. Uh, into the city of Liberty Lake, uh, that increase, you know, thereby increasing beds sold. Uh, overnight stays, and, and so, uh, we do put out, so we didn't put out. A round of funding last year. Um, but we did just complete one that's actually on your agenda tonight. Uh, for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, uh, tourism promotion related dollars. And these are expensed on a reimbursement basis, so there are parameters that these entities have to follow. They have to show that these expenses incurred are directly tied to an allowable use. Uh, and that's where you see these expenses. And so the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee will review these applications. They will recommend, make a recommendation to city council. Uh, and so that's what you're gonna see under action items tonight. And then, once those are, so if and when those are approved. There's a contract that is signed and then reimbursement documentation that is then sent to them, uh, for when these. When these events happen. So, uh, the city does reimburse through this fund for those activities.
Two funds for this, um, fund one fifteen and one sixteen, still have different buckets of money, right Kyle?
Correct, so the Tourism Promotion Capital Fund is not something that we've, that, and looking back through, I have identified any major expenditures from. So it's a, um. So this is an additional one point three percent for capital projects related to tourism. This is something the Lodging Tax Advisory Board is gonna have to look into. Once we get, once, once in a, like, a legitimate identified purpose for these funds. Um, kind of presents itself. And what you're looking for, uh, i- it's tricky to kind of piece out a smaller capital project. You know, what's more likely is, you know, we might see this sit for a couple of years and build. And then, we have a better opportunity to identify potentially a larger expenditure that has a more beneficial use. Uh, than piecing out maybe a couple smaller projects.
Well, I believe, uh, council receivers, you are, are represented from the city this year, if I remember correctly.
Yep.
Yeah.
I didn't make the meeting.
Yeah, I, I took that banner, oh yeah, so he was a, yeah, willing participant, but I kind of took that banner from him. Uh, as he had some other obligations that he was standing to, so.
We'll be just, uh, just a heads up for the council members and the, the, um, new members who are, have joined us tonight will be looking for a new representative for next year.
Yeah.
All right, and then I forget, we also have fund one seventeen, so they're actually three, but all in the same, all related. Okay, Restricted Reserve Fund, Kyle, um, not a lot to talk about with, with this, we have a, um, we have a. A target of fifteen percent of the general fund, um, that we hold, anything you wanna add?
No, it's a pretty straightforward, fifteen percent of the general fund's operating revenue. Um, and so, yeah, that's just updated based on those projections each year.
And again, for our, our viewers and maybe new, newer council members, the only times that we can use this is. Basically in, in an emergency, correct?
Yep.
All right. Okay, Cityland LT Geo Bund uses, we're on page eighty seven, this is the, um, this was paid in full. Um, so, um, just because there's past history on it, it still comes out as part of the budget, so there's really nothing to talk about. One to fourteen, um, REIT one. We have the summary page, uh, and Kyle will go ahead and I'll, uh, turn it over to you again. If you wanna just go quickly through the lift match and the capital outlay, um, both for REIT one and REIT two.
Yes, so you have, uh, um, one quarter of one percent of real estate property tax is dedicated to this fund. It is a restricted revenue, and so we do, you know, via the Capital Facilities Plan. Identify allowable capital uses for this fund and also for REIT two. It's, they're really parallel funds, REIT two has a little bit more narrow classification. But since we have our Capital Facilities Plan, that is not an issue. Because we, um, we go above and beyond in identifying appropriate capital uses for, uh, for these funds. And so what you'll see in here and something up that I'll bring up maybe towards the end of our seven o'clock. Discussion is a couple of alterations that we're gonna need to make to this budget before we pass the final one. So I think as everybody's aware, we applied for a TIB grant, uh, for the Kramer Parkway Overpass. And so that's, or, or for the Kramer Parkway Road, my apologies, two separate things, so Kramer Parkway Road, re, uh, reconstruction. And so we did not get that, and so that is identified in this budget, so I'm gonna take that out and that'll reflect the actual. Um, revenues and expenditures, uh, for, for REIT one, so we have a, a, a more. A, a, a truer accurate, or a truer representation of revenues and expenditures. And so, um, we, based on, um. Uh, Lisa's recommendation, we are gonna proceed with, uh, with those improvements over on Kramer. And so we are just going to, uh, we're just gonna have to identify other funding scenarios that we can take advantage of. Uh, as we kind of, you know, move through, uh, additional capital facilities improvements.
Question, um, Kyle, looking at the, uh, jog my memory here, two thousand twenty, actual. We paid eighty thousand, one thirteen, if I remember correctly, that was the final payment for Town Square Park, is that correct?
Oh, are you back on the LGT, you know, you're back on L T G H O, it's, okay.
That's, yeah, that's my understanding, so, so yeah, funds, uh, two fourteen is a dormant fund at this time, yeah.
Two nineteen, one sixty one. Once again, I don't know if you were. You got into this, Chris, you might remember this, was the one sixty one, we paid that in, in the year, was that a payment?
Yeah.
For Town Square Park?
No, it was the golf course.
That was a golf course?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, we paid the golf course off in twenty twenty.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so any questions on any detail with regards to the REIT one and REIT two funds? And Kyle, I've made a note about the, uh, adjustment, um, later on with regards to REIT one.
Yep.
All right, so now we are at page, here we are. Through here, I'm watching the clock, um, page ninety four, Street Capital Project Fund Resources. Again, everything on here is really from the CFP. Look at the detail on the following pages, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions since we went through these in the CFP. Councilmember Fuller.
Sorry, Mayor, I missed one of my notes, um, started back up, on page ninety, you talks about the traffic signal. At the very bottom there, uh, six zero zero three, in the comments section. The, uh, Little River Lake Land Company will also be to the project, do we have a percentage on that?
Um, there's a, uh, we signed a contract or letter, and I forgot what, what the document was called, we signed this with them earlier this year. They are committed to, I think it was a minimum of a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars, but they're actually responsible for the cost. For that fourth leg of that light in that contract.
Okay, thank you, I could remember, thank you.
Okay, so we're back on the Street Capital Projects, anybody have any questions on anything with the Streets Capital Projects? Since we went through that this week. Okay, not seeing any, and then we'll skip from that detail to page ninety eight, the Henry Road Project from Mission. To Appleway, and again, a lot, most of these are CFP, anybody, um, has any? Questions on these or any need to get into the details, Kyle, I think you're already saying something.
Yeah, I'm gonna add some additional information to this, and so if you look at the updated CFP. Uh, that Lisa put out at our special council meeting, you'll notice, uh. An amount of two point three million for the Kramer Parkway Overpass. And so, we are also going to update this to be reimbursable by lift to, to reflect. The total cost of this project or total potential cost of this project. Uh, initial, uh, initial thoughts were, we were going to reconcile any remaining balance in twenty twenty three. Uh, but it makes more sense to put the total cost in this for twenty twenty two, in the event that we can reconcile at the end of the year.
Makes sense, and I've got a silly question, is it, can we go back and change the title of that fund? Cause, since Henry was. Can we change that or not, does it have to stay that way?
No, I will, I can change that, so.
I think it'll help make sense to people.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thanks. All right, now we've got our Harvard Road Mitigation Fund Resources, page ninety nine. This is, these are the mitigation fees that developers pay into, um, to offset some infrastructure. Anybody have any questions on that? I love that it's way, uh, the, we look at the detail on page one hundred. The, uh. Seems to keep going up, so. These are, as our. Development keeps going, so, um, I know, um. Kyle, I know people have asked this question, it's been several years now since we revisited those numbers. And with inflation the way they are, I know the history on this fund goes back to, I think the developers actually started this. Um, and then we took it over and then there were some increases, gosh. I would say at least maybe four years ago, I may be a little off, um, but at what point is it prudent to go back and relook at those? And I know Lisa popped on, cause she may have a quick opinion, so I'll let her answer.
Yeah, so, so.
Yeah, so, so a couple of things I would say on that. First and foremost, um, when we did update it back in twenty fourteen, it was actually that long ago. Um, and we are supposed to revisit this every, uh, number of years. We did the network analysis and that gives us a good basis to go back. And relook at the Harvard Road, uh, mitigation fees, and that may be something that we, um. That that we probably want to look at in the next year or two. Uh, the other thing a- and and the other thing that I would, I I would point out is that this is. The Harvard Road mitigation fees are actually part of the Transportation Improvement District. And because of that, I believe that that I and I'm I'm maybe wrong on the date. I believe that that expires in twenty twenty six. And we'll have to reinstitute it. So it it may make some sense for us to look at that and kind of lay the foundation. For the, um, for, uh, renewing that Transportation Improvement District.
It sounds like we've got two things we can add to our action or longer term action. Those Kyle and Lisa, if we can start looking at. Again, given the, you know, the inflation numbers we're looking at, I think, looking at, um, possible. Um, changes for going to the twenty twenty three budget is a wise move. Um, and then I don't know how long it takes to get through the reinstating, um, of that district, but, um, I'm going to start putting together. Walking backwards on that timeline as well. See when we need to start to, um, to start certain activities.
Absolutely.
I'm good?
Yeah, absolutely.
Questions on Harvard Road mitigation funds? So, okay. And we're on the one oh two and I'm gonna give us, let's get through this next one and then we can break and we'll pick up the budget back up during our seven o'clock workshop. So page one oh two, we've got the library capital fund resources. Um, this is what we discussed once again in the CFP. Um, the decision was to leave the hundred thousand dollars. In there for twenty twenty two for various purposes, one being getting the architect involved and then. Um, possible match for, um, grant funding. So nobody has any questions on that. Um, that brings us to six fifty. So I'll I'll make my little mark here. So when we come back at seven o'clock. For that workshop, we can start from there. So let's go ahead and take a quick ten minute break, everybody. Um, if you just want to make sure you're on mute and if you wanted to stop your video, we will join back at seven o'clock. Thanks. Can't hear you yet. There must be a secret sequence of buttons. Can you hear us now?
Yes.
Well, we'll get, I think it changes every time. It's a secret code. All right, uh, everybody, welcome back to, uh, our Tuesday, December ninth, December ninth, December seventh, twenty twenty one, regular council meeting. Um, Governor Enslie's order twenty dash twenty eight got fifteen regarding the PMA remains in effect. It requires public meetings, hearings to be held remotely with the option of also holding an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing if certain conditions are met. At the present time, the city of Liberty Lake has determined not to hold an in-person component to a public meeting or hearing. So we'll go ahead and I once again forgot, um, to ask someone to do the invocation. So I'll go ahead and do it. Um, so if you would please rise with me, we do the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear Father, thank you for bringing us all here together safely today to meet and discuss the future of our city. Um, so that we make the best decisions for everybody all around, our citizens, those in the community. And make it a place that everybody loves to be in their safe place to raise our kids so that one day after they may go away for a little bit, they may decide to come back here and be with us again. Just stay with our crews as they continue to help clear our streets, keep them safe, keep our, keep our drivers and our pedestrians safe. And as always, please keep an extra watch out for our first responders. Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we will call the meeting to order. Um, Mayor Protim, agenda approval.
Agenda approval, yes, ma'am. Um. First of all, roll call.
Oh, I skipped one. Number four, roll call. All right, we'll do a voice. Make sure we hear everybody. Mayor Protim.
President.
Councilmember Fuller.
President.
Councilmember Langford. Do not see. Okay. Um, councilmember Seavers.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Now, okay, councilmember Dunn is out on business, um, and by recommendation of our, uh, our Secretary of State, we are, we are noting that the. November second election was certified, um, with Holly Woodruff as the, as the winner in that race, so she cannot take office. So she is not meeting either. So do we have a, um. A motion to excuse Councilmembers Langford and Dunn?
Yes, we are. Make a motion of your excuse Councilman Dunn and Langford from the city's meeting.
Okay, Councilmember Dunn's out for business. We'll follow up with Councilmember Langford. He was planning to be here.
Yes.
So for now, we'll make it excused. Or do we make it unexcused since we don't have? I can do a start. Mayor Protim.
Our second.
Okay.
Wait for a second.
Okay. So are we, just to clarify, are we, are we motioning and seconding to excuse both even though we don't, um, we don't know why Councilmember Langford has not been able to join us?
I did receive a text earlier today, the Councilman Langford had planned on attending, so my assumption would be maybe he's had a some technical challenges.
All right, so we'll go ahead and. And the motion was to excuse both of them. And we have a second from Councilmember Seavers. Any discussion? Right now, hearing any? All in favor of excusing Councilmembers Langford and Dunn, um, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm not hearing many people, but I have this, any votes? I know those, okay, motion has, so yeah, there's only four of you guys here tonight. All right. All right, now, agenda approval.
May I make a, I know, let me go ahead and make the agenda approval first. On it, uh. Mayor, I make a motion, the agenda approval with one addition, and that would be, we failed to, I I failed to catch this. We needed to add the council comments. Which would be between item number ten and eleven.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we add that to the agenda.
Do we have a second? This is something that was changed with our rules of procedures. And second, and we'll correct it going forward on our future meetings as well.
Second.
So, any questions or comments? Right now, hearing any? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right, sounds like I have it opposed. All right, motion passes boards here to amend the agenda.
Mayor, if I may, for a moment.
Yes.
Before going to citizen comments, but, uh, have the pleasure, I'd like to be able to say something regards to December seventh. Nineteen forty one.
Yes.
Eighty years ago today. And I know that, uh, a lot of flags are flying half mask today. There's a lot of individuals that you see on the news talking about what happened. Uh, eighty years ago today. And the thing that from myself and growing up, growing up somewhat after that era. And seeing my parents who were involved in World War Two. Uh, Bob Moore, who was, uh, of the age bracket remembers it very well. That all of us were in our lives who long after we were born into that have been affected by. What this country and many other countries were able to do. That they saw that there was something wrong in the world and they collectively got together in other countries. And hundreds and thousands of millions of individuals died during that entire thing. But what it did do was tell, I think, the world is that. When we get into conflict and stuff, we need to be able to sit down, work out our challenges. The world still has those challenges on it. But I for one am proud to be an American. I'm proud to be living in Liberty Lake. I'm proud to be a council member and be of all of other. Very outstanding council members and citizens that come forward to make this town a great place to live. I believe that the people who went before us had paid that price. And although we are not paying the price with our life, we are paying the price with our time. And I just want to appreciate everybody. Remember what happened eighty years ago. December seventh, nineteen forty one. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Really appreciate it. Okay, uh, so we are moving to citizen comments. Um, so this is the time when, um, members of the public can make a comment. They'll have up to three minutes. Uh, on any topic, it's a time for comment only, no response from the council. Uh, if there are action items to be taken, um, or with or answers needed for the citizens, we will follow up on that. So I, you can either raise your hand, um, in. In Zoom, I may call on you, or you can send a message to either Todd Henderson. I think Todd Henderson is our ceiling meeting manager. Um, send him a note in chat that you would like to make a, make a statement. So first up, we do have Mark Saba. Mark, you've got three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Um, my name is Mark Saba. I live on one two two, uh, North Malvern Road, Liberty Lake. I'm a volunteer for Winter Glow Spectacular. And I would like to thank council members Kirk, Foer and Seaver. For voting yes on the American Rescue Plan Act. For nonprofits. Winter Glow is a nonprofit. The monies we lost over the last two years due to COVID. Put a strain on keeping the holiday lights on at Orchard Park. The, uh, ARP funds that we received has allowed us to keep the, uh. The park lights, uh, Orchard Park lit up over the holidays. And will also allow us to add new displays in the upcoming years. Uh, again, I would like to thank everybody who, uh, supported this. Uh, it is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate.
You're welcome.
Do we have any? I don't see any other hands. Do we have any other? People sending you any notifications, Todd?
Yeah.
All right, not seeing or hearing any. There will be another chance at the end of the meeting for citizen comments as well as during our, um, our public hearing period. A little later in the meeting. So we will go on to. Announcements, proclamations, special presentations. I don't think we have any, Kelsey. Is that correct? Okay.
None that I'm aware of.
Very much. Um, reports and inquiries, city council records. Do you have anybody who needs to report on any, anything over the last couple of weeks? Mayor Protim.
I mentioned that, uh, two weeks ago, I went to a luncheon for Spokane Valley, uh, Chamber, annual meeting. It was, uh, well attended. It was outstanding to be able to. Get together with a lot of other individuals. Personally, it's amazing how. We've gotten used to Zoom and it's very effective in many ways, but it certainly doesn't replace the ability of being able to sit down. And visit with other council members and, uh, people involved within the city. So it was very, very good. Uh, Saturday, uh, myself and two of our future council members. Uh, attended a six and a half hour AWC Zoom. Of which I think for some individuals, the combination would be that the alternative would be is watching paint rust on some of these, uh. Talks, but they do get a little bit long in the tooth, but it was very effective. I was very pleased to see, uh, our incoming council members involved in that. And I hope that you stay involved with the AWC and get your credentials over a period of time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, check it out. Yeah, okay. Um, any other council members have any reports? All right, not seeing any. Jumped into my report, um. And keep it, keep it brief. Lots, lots of things coming up, um, this weekend next, kind of wrapping up the year with a lot of the boards and whatnot. A couple of GSI meetings tomorrow, um, one that I'm, I'm looking forward to both. One is the legislative forum, um, tomorrow evening. Uh, earlier in the morning is the GSI Business Leaders Call, and there will be. Uh, eleven senators from Governor Enslie's office presenting, um, any updated. Information and answering questions on COVID. So very interested to hear what his office will be, um, conveying. Tomorrow during that meeting, um, got a visit Spokane annual board, end of the year board meeting. Um, in celebration on Thursday, upcoming Washington Policy Center, um, event. And I know I'll lose track of the rest, but, um, they kind of run into each other at this time of year and the beginning of the year. So. Um, and, you know, to the council members and the future council members, just remember if you're not on any, on all of those emails where these announcements of these meetings come out. Um, just let me know, um, I can. Just send out a reminder of what ones that we get on a regular basis so you can take advantage of, um, any meetings or whatnot that's coming up. It's always great to help stay informed. All right, now we've got the city administrator report. Jen.
Thank you. We told, we get the. There we go. All right, well, we'll kick it off with, uh, an update from Lisa on Trailhead.
I apologize, a delay in unmuting. So I just wanted to, uh, make, uh, the council members, uh, aware that later in the agenda. You're going to be asked to approve or authorize execution of the first. Part of our design build contract, which is, uh, the pre-construction contract. And what this does is the first fourteen pages of the contract. And it authorizes pre-construction services to include the programming for the facility. And, uh, from their preliminary design con- concepts, completing the design. Um, in order to get to the place where, uh, we can identify that guaranteed maximum price. And so, um, the schedule that's anticipated should you, um, authorize this execution. Is that, um, the team is going to begin immediately on looking at programming. Um, they're anticipated to come back and provide. You with a, an update regarding the programming and of the space. And the proposed scope is based upon the budget that you've identified, um, in sometime in February. And then you'll also be given the opportunity to confirm the preliminary design and guaranteed maximum price. Uh, amendment in early spring. So that's the second half of the contract. Um, in the interim, we may be asking you to authorize me, many GMPs. To help us, um, address some of the long lead item or long. Uh, lead item materials like the, the poles and netting for the driving range. Um, and, but you do, we'll also have the option, once we, once we've identified that guaranteed maximum price. If we can't reach an agreement with Bowden in terms that, that, that you city councilor are comfortable with. We do have an off-ramp at that point and we can just proceed what we own the design and we could proceed. Uh, to publicly bid the project. So, um, so we have some options going forward, but I really wanted to just kind of take a moment. This is kind of a new experience for us. In the design build arena. And so I wanted to make it clear. That's, uh, sorry about the phone. Uh, wanted to make it clear that you're really only authorizing that first piece to create pre-construction services. Um, and that's all I had.
Thanks, Lisa.
All right, uh, moving on. So Trevor has a brief update for everyone on the status of the HVAC project here at City Hall. Trevor?
Uh, good evening, Council Mayor. Um, so I know it's been taking a little bit of time since, uh, you guys approved, um. The project to R and R. Um, hope you can understand that with materials. Uh, it's just taken a while for them to get everything, uh, but we are scheduled to start on December twentieth, uh, understanding that that falls. Before two holiday weeks, uh, but R and R is going to push to get, uh, to get this done as soon as possible for us. Um. There will be little to no disturbance with inside City Hall, um, throughout the process, both with the heat staying on, um. And then moving a little access point, um, so that way we're not having to get into a, um. City staff's office space. So, uh, December twentieth, uh, we'll just keep pushing and I will keep you guys updated, uh, as we go from there. Um, but hopefully. Within a couple of weeks after the start date, we'll, uh, be finished. We'll have our. Our return units inside of council chambers and we'll have our foreign units with the, uh, air scrubbers, uh, air scrubbers also installed. So. We will keep you updated as we have updates for you.
Thanks, Trevor. Um, and then Trevor and or Derek, do you, do you guys want to provide a quick snow update for our first, uh, snowfall, snowplow yesterday?
Yeah, so we, and I think Derek's on as well, but, uh, yeah, so the first snowplow, um. Of the year, um, or the season. of the year or the season. Obviously, Stephen's last day was Friday, and then we get snow on Monday. So luckily, Stephen left us very well-trained and well-versed, and we've got great equipment. So had a few issues like Jen spoke to at the first meeting, but we ended up making it through just fine, just working out a couple of kinks. Got some, we have some new staff on streets and trails, so just getting them comfortable with plowing. And yeah, we're fully confident that we'll have another great year as far as being able to keep the roads clear for you guys. And throughout the interim of, until we get back to Stephen's position, it'll be myself and Derek Kusenky that will be heading up the plowing, the streets portion. Derek kind of filling in and then me just assisting him. So if you guys have any questions, if you have any feedback from the snow event yesterday, I would love to hear from you. Otherwise, hopefully, everyone was happy with the snow removal efforts.
Thank you. You guys did a good job. Okay, Lisa, vacancies for planning commission. And just for everyone's information, we've been pushing that out pretty hard on particularly for planning commission, but we've been pushing that pretty hard on social media and the website, notify me. And so with that being said, I'll let Lisa finish up on her perspective.
Yeah, so we have, right now, we're looking at three vacancies for voting members and two vacancies for our adjunct planning commissioners. And I just wanted to do a little plug and really encourage citizens to consider getting involved with the planning commission. It's a great opportunity to learn more about the city and understand more about the workings of government and really shaping the future of your city. And so I'd love to see a robust response to this. It's a great way to engage in the city. Thank you.
And it looks like I skipped over Joanne. So Joanne, are you ready to update on reading buddies?
Sure. Good evening. So Reading Buddies is a new program that we are creating in conjunction with my teen advisory group members. We've put it out now. It's the signups already on the website, and we've advertised it on Facebook and in our newsletter. But currently, we have twenty children signed up already, kindergarten through third grade. And we have twelve teens signed up to be their reading buddies. And that starts in January. It's going to be on Fridays and Saturdays once a month. So it's just a really great early literacy program to help children, you know, feel confident with their reading. And it's going to be held at the library.
Thank you, Joanne. Are there any questions? All right. Mayor Chris, did you have a question?
Yeah, Mayor Protop, I think I had a question with regards to the planning commission.
Yeah, I want to break this back up with Lisa. We were talking about this before the meeting started. Do we still have individuals' positions for individuals who don't live within the city?
Yes, we do still allow for, and I can't remember the number off the top of my head, but I think we can have one or two, one or two applicants or one or two members that do live outside the city.
Thank you.
And we are reaching out to some of the previous applicants by emails, willing to remind them. And since, no, I've got one more thing. When you're done, Jen, I forgot to mention it earlier. Go ahead and finish.
Okay, so moving on to community engagement applications, and then as well as city council apps. Kelsey, would you like to provide an update on that, and I'll follow up?
Sure. So similar to planning commission, we're pushing the advertisements for those open seats. And that new community engagement commission, we've received about eight or nine applications for the community engagement commission, which is a good start. We're going to continue accepting applications for that through December. And with the proposed new position of the communication specialist to kind of head that committee, look at doing interviews in January. So I've notified all the applicants to that timeframe, let them thank them for their interest, and let them know we'll be following up after the holidays. For city council apps for that open position, we're advertising for that as well, but have not received any applications yet. So if you are interested, or if you know anybody who's interested, please encourage them to submit that application. I'm hoping to get a good pool of people there to interview.
And that deadline is by January third. And again, as Kelsey stated, we're going to be pushing that out pretty heavily on social media and trying to create some buzz so people have conversation and maybe can encourage each other to apply. So. Mayor, did you have a question now?
I just want to mention, I got the notification out to the council, but it will soon be going out on our social media. Tuesday, December fourteenth, so a week from tonight, from four to seven, we are having a clip and house for the community, city employees, the council commissions, the city partners such as Avista STA and whatnot to come in and meet our two finalists for the city administrator position. We will be providing copies of resumes, a copy of the job description. So it's obviously people who aren't intimately involved with the city. So, you know, people are going to be giving us feedback. We would love for them to make sure they understand the position as well. And then along with that packet, feedback forms for each. And then we will take all of that into consideration. And my hope is that that week to make a recommendation for the council and then at the following meeting to hopefully confirm. But we are still confirming the location. I believe we are securing the room at Meadowwood Tech. I'm going to go take a look at it tomorrow to make sure it fits size-wise, because we want to be able to socially distance and obviously have our candidates spaced out fairly well. And obviously, city council not having HVAC update yet, and the fact that it's, you know, it's a bit smaller room. We just want to have a bigger room to have that. So TBD on the location. It is going to be in Liberty Lake. So hopefully, we'll have a lot of our community members come and meet the candidates as well.
Thank you. And also not on this list is December fifteenth, next Wednesday, and I believe it's at eleven-thirty. We're having a city staff lunch similar to, well, not similar. We usually have a staff lunch around Christmas time, but we're not doing the typical procedure that we normally do. But council members, you are absolutely welcome to join us if you would like to. I think an invitation is going to be sent out to you as well. So again, it's Wednesday, the fifteenth. And then City Hall will be closed and library will be closed December twenty-fourth and thirty-first in honor of the holidays. And Winter Glow is really the only event that is on right now, and I can see it from miles away. It continues through December, I believe, until the first or second of January. And that is all I have for my report. Are there any questions?
I think we do want to, we missed putting Parks Arts Commission on any either of our reports. So I do see Elena here, and so I want to give her the opportunity to give a quick update on Parks Arts Commission.
Great, thanks. So first, our Liberty Lake Together statue has been installed at Rocky Hill, and curbing has also been installed. We're just going to wait for lighting, and we're working on pricing out a dedication plaque for for that as well. We are hoping to have a dedication ceremony, kind of running out of time. And I believe Commissioner Frank was going to reach out to you, mayor, and to the artist, and try to see if we could pull something together in the next week or so. Could be tricky, but that was what we were hoping to do, is have a dedication ceremony for that. Let's see. The commission is working on a collaboration with Hoop Fest. I don't know if you guys have seen, but all over Spokane, they are putting art murals on basketball courts throughout the city, and we are due for a resurface of the basketball courts at Pavilion Park in 2023. So we are hoping to start working on a collaboration and maybe have those courts be part of on this project, the Hoop Fest project. They haven't done any close to as far out as Liberty Lake, so that would be a great collaboration. The Winter Glow's going on. It looks beautiful. I just came from there tonight. The Liberty Creek second graders did their holiday performance there with the lights in the background, and it was so cute. Really cute. And I'm so glad that the park could be used to socially distance and have all the parents come and see their little second graders. So that was really cute. We're also working on utility box wraps. We're starting the thought process. We've got two coming up. One by Ridgeline High School. I'm trying to see if the high school is interested in doing some artwork for that utility box. So we're just kind of starting that process now, seeing if they're interested. And then the other one over Harvest Parkway, does that sound right? Over by the River District over that way. They're going to have a welcome center that's going to have Native American art in that welcome center. And so we were thinking we might have the artwork for that utility box be Native American themed. So we're going to try to work with the tribes and Spokane arts to see if we can get a specialized call to artists. And they have some recommendations, hopefully, for some artists for that utility box. So I think that's all we're working on. We're actually pretty busy for the winter. So does anyone have any questions?
Okay. And Kelsey, if we could reflect on the record that Councilmember Langford's been able to join us. Welcome, Odin. All right, so we'll move into the next part of the agenda, which is back to workshop discussion. So our six o'clock meeting, we left off after page one oh two, so we are on page one hundred and three. Yes.
We should adjust the, adjust the for Councilmember Langford did attend.
Okay, Kelsey, I'm not quite sure how you note that in the record in the minutes. Since we had originally excused Councilmember Langford, you have a
I'll note it in the minutes, what time he joined the meeting.
Thank you. Back on the budget, we're on page one oh three, starting with the Municipal Facilities Fund Master Plan. Again, this is capital project fund. Really, most of these, I don't even know if we have to go through all of them. I'll just hit them all at a high level. We talked about all of these during our Capital Facilities Plan discussion at our special meeting last week, which went really well, and I really appreciate everybody's engagement in that. So first, we've got the municipal, can't say that, Municipal Facilities Fund Master Plan, if there's any questions on that. That's page one oh three. I'm going to be going pretty quick, so if I jump over something, just stop me. All right, second one, that's the Police Capital Fund Resources. See, yeah. Community Messaging Fund. And we left this in. The questions there. Okay, Underground Utility Fund, this is the $25,000 we've been putting in each year in hopes of being able to underground some of our utilities with hopefully some matching funds at some point. Councilmember Foyer.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm trying to understand what the purpose is.
The purpose of the Underground Utility Fund?
Yes.
That savings account for undergrounding some areas of our utilities that could be moved underground, but it's a very costly expense. And I believe that the hope is, and Kyle jumped in, to be able to get some grant funding for matching dollars at some point for these.
Yeah, and Lisa, if you're on, I think she can explain better than me, but to your point, Mayor, you're basically identifying areas where we can, you know, underground any, obviously, you know, power poles, I suppose, if possible, but any utilities that are currently overhead to improve the aesthetic of the community and to, I guess, yeah, decrease any potential issue for harm to those wires. Lisa, if you're on, can you identify any potential use of this kind of in the next couple of years where we would be able to use these funds?
So again, it's, we have a, in development code, we have a requirement that all new utilities be buried underground with the exception of high-powered lines and distribution lines that are over a certain number of kilowatts. So that's, and frankly, most of the wires within the city have already underground utilities are already in that format. We do have some, particularly in the older commercial and light industrial area. And what our code says is that if if we have a roadway project, we can require them to move them, but we cannot require them to underground existing overhead lines because of the cost. They're kind of grandfathered in there. So this would enable us to look at a potential project. And usually, it's most effective when you couple it with, when you couple it with a roadway project. Again, the opportunity may present itself as we look at, as we see development projects going on elsewhere, and we can suggest the undergrounding of the utilities. But at this point, there's not a project on the horizon that I'm aware of. I can see it happening when we go out, when we see development going out the eastern side of Appleway towards the eastern city limit. That's a potential. I can also see a potential for it. Going out Country Vista. So it just, it's really, it really enables us to kind of have some funds in our pocket that we can do some matching grants when an opportunity presents itself. But there's nothing on the horizon at the moment, if that makes sense. It's a very small pot of money, what we have today, for what it would cost underground.
I guess that's the reason why I asked the question, not a drop in the bucket, to do overhead to underground. Like earlier, Lisa, all the new underground anyways. And I guess in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, but it seems like utilities are owned by the company, not the city. So is it a, if there was a grant opportunity, if we didn't have it, we'd be able to take advantage of it? Is that the reason? Or just so we can have some skin in the game if the day ever comes? The idea?
Again, this predates me by a long shot, but that's my, but that's my understanding of the program is that to have the money there when the opportunity, if and when the opportunity presents itself such that we might be able to leverage some additional dollars.
Does the city own any utilities within the city?
No, the city does not. It's not for city utilities. I'll give you an example. When I was Community Development Director for the City of Hayden, and we did the Government Way Downtown Revitalization Project, part of that project was burying overhead utility lines, which there still was a distribution line, but we got everything else underground. That was a two-mile stretch. We got a block, a community development block grant to help fund that. And we still, it was still, it cost us about a million dollars to bury those utility lines. But again, we had, we had some funds, we had some funds in the bank to help with that process.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, moving on to our Building Contingency Fund. This is the fund that we set up several years ago now, when we had trouble with the library roof almost caving in. So we tried to keep about $125,000 in there, and then we replenished whatever we spent the year before. So if anybody has any questions on that. All right, moving on. Trailhead Improvements Project Fund. Not sure if there's anything more to discuss on that. We had our update. Everybody understands where we are in that project, and we're looking at the $8,000, $8 million for that. Right now, it's all in 2020. Right now, it's all in twenty twenty two, though I expect some of that may go out to twenty twenty three. Then obviously the debt service will be. Much longer than that. Stormwater utility fund resources. This is always beyond my scope of knowledge at a detail level. I know we've, Lisa or Jen, who's got this, maybe even David at this point, we've got our. We've got the grant money for some of this and I know we're moving ahead with a lot of that activity. Anybody having questions?
Yeah, of course you don't use it, I'm confused by capital, all the new truck. Under stormwater.
Yeah, I can, I can explain that, so it's, it's actually a pickup that is.
Explain someone's question.
What was that?
I have no idea.
Who was it?
I have no idea, go ahead, Jen.
Okay, so it's for a streets pickup and it's similar to what we do with the streets. Crew that I was explaining earlier where part of the split comes out of streets. Fund and part of the split of the funding of that pickup comes out of the stormwater fund. So it's one pickup, but the cost of it is being portioned out of, part of it's being portioned out of the stormwater fund and part of it's being funded through the streets fund.
Fifty fifty split or something?
Yeah, it's a fifty fifty split, I'm looking, it's in the fleet road, it'll show it in the fleet rotation plan. I have a spreadsheet in there that shows stormwater, streets, golf parks, and it shows the split there. But yes.
Great, thank you.
Great, any other questions on that? Alright. Moving on, one of my pages are stuck. So the next couple pages after the, that general page from our utility is the detail. And then we get to page one thirteen aquifer protection fund resources. And this kind of types in with stormwater management, is there anything you want to add on this? Jen or Lisa or David? Any questions from council? Good, Councilmember Fuller.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, as I look at this year after year, the, the balance keeps increasing and. I guess we're inching up close to five hundred thousand, just wondering, what's the long term? Goal for the funds, I guess.
So actually I can answer that. Councilmember for your, so. What the stormwater master plan grant is going to be looking at is we have been building. New infrastructure, we're fairly young city over time, we, we need to look at. Maintenance of our, and we had this conversation before, maintenance of our facilities. And our facilities include stormwater treatment, which is a means of protecting the aquifer, do have, so, so. Will need to be addressing some of those underground facilities and the underground facilities are. Dry wells and piping, et cetera. The other thing that we will probably be looking at in the longer term is using some of these funds. As matching funds to possibly go after a street sweeper. For, and again, that helps to assist with, with maintaining the aquifer. Again, these are, we'll have more information, we'll have more guidance in terms of what our. Long term maintenance requirements are going to be with our stormwater system, following our stormwater master plan, the other thing is that. We do have a pretty significant, we will have to be going after. A national stormwater permit. In twenty twenty four, I believe. And that, that's the other thing, the stormwater grant helped, the master plan will help us to set the table for that and that's. Determined based upon population, we've exceeded population threshold, thresholds in this last. Census, so that's gonna require us to do that. Again, the funds, these funds could be utilized for that permitting process as well, which is gonna be mandated. In the coming years.
Okay, great, thank you, so none of these funds are collaborate or joint efforts with the sea water?
No.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, any other questions on stormwater or aquifer protection? Alright, now we're up to golf operations fund resources, page one sixteen, we have our summary here. Of the fund and then the detail behind it. Are there any questions on the summary page? Seeing any. So we're looking, starting to look at the detail, page one seventeen. Anyone has any questions on one seventeen, all about fees and sales? Questions, Mayor Bertin?
Just a call of question with Kyle, we've had some discussion in the past, but we're gonna start looking at taking the golf. And being more detailed for the council and also the citizens. Showing our revenue and expenses in relationship, somewhat confusing from the, the public has been when we show. Show the pie, we show eight million dollars coming in, even miscellaneous in there and yet there is. Five hundred and some odd thousand dollars in revenue that comes from the golf and it's not there, I understand we showed somewhere else. But I think it's somewhat confusing to not only possible, so the council members such as myself, but the citizens. That to know exactly what comes in and what goes out, let's try that then.
And to expand on that a little bit, I did, I did coordinate with Jen, Councilmember Kennedy. On what our, so what we don't necessarily see in Fund Four Twenty Golf Operations. Is, is grounds, different. Different operations for maintenance of the golf course, that is under the umbrella of maintenance operations in the general fund. But we can extrapolate that cost and estimate that cost at around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for twenty twenty one. And so we can, in effect, if council, i- if council would like to see, you know, more. I guess detailed line item, projection of, you know, expenses and revenues from the golf course. We can certainly do that. But it, for tracking purposes, for, for hours used and for equipment, it is easier. To put it under the umbrella of maintenance and operations.
Go ahead. Simple to put it underneath that, but I think it's more confusing to the public. That I recall in two thousand nineteen, I think it would have been, where RJ put together the numbers to actually show. A percentage in there is what's coming from maintenance, I know it's very difficult to try to split those numbers. So it's a matter of just trying to do some, some educated estimate there. But what the benefit was, is it actually showed our revenue coming in, our expenses. And it showed that we were paying more out than what was coming in, but the benefit of that, I want to really emphasize this. It showed for the benefit of some of the new council members. What it showed, there was a figure of about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars that we were putting in more than what we were receiving back in funds. The benefit to that is that we were able to spend some time in council to have a workshop on that. Determination was, do we want to keep the golf course? And before that, do we want to keep the fifty four acres? And unanimously, the, the council voted yes, we always want to protect that fifty four acres. Then it came down to the question, do we want to have a golf course? And RJ was able to put these numbers together and what it showed is that roughly one sixty, I'm gonna use that as a round figure. That one sixty we're paying more than we're bringing in, but then the question was, if we didn't have the golf course, what would it cost us to maintain? Fifty four acres, fifty two acres, it was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So I think what was beneficial to the public and also the council to realize that by keeping the golf course. And keeping it protected fifty four acres, we were only putting down an extra forty, fifty thousand a year for a great asset. And I think for being able to maintain that type of information is advantageous for us moving forward on trailing.
Absolutely, and I will, yeah, and Councilmember Kennedy, I will compile those numbers, I do have some preliminary estimates, you know, we're getting pretty close to the end of the year. But to date, we have received two hundred and eighty five thousand more than we have expensed. Only in the golf operation fund, if you take the one hundred and ninety thousand thereabout. That it costs to cover the grounds, you know, we're about, you know, ninety, ninety five thousand. In profit for, for twenty twenty one, which is truly unprecedented, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Fuller. I saw your, your hand sneak there.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you. Kyle, the hundred and ninety thousand. Maintain the course. Is that? Salary, is that? Equipment? Is that fuel, is that? Seems like kind of a low number for a nine month entry.
So. My understanding is that is salaries and benefits, we, we do have equipment that is included in. The golf operations fund for the capital outlay, Jen, can you speak a little bit more to what equipment might be under the maintenance and operation umbrella? That might be used for the golf course?
Well, let me go back to what Phil is asking, so Philly, it's, it's for salaries of the maintenance staff only, not the pro shop. So that's what that hundred and ninety thousand is for, but everything else that we budget for the golf course. Regarding operations like buying fertilizers and pesticides, those are already budgeted in the enterprise fund under golf. So the only, the only item that isn't is that magical hundred and ninety thousand dollar salaries. Number, which is, actually comes out of the general fund. But our fleet, our fleet, our, our operating expenses beyond staff, that all comes out of the enterprise fund.
I appreciate the explanation, feel like we haven't had that discussion, so thank you.
Well, thank you, I would like to ask this question, I've had this in my notes for some time, if I can revert back to page twenty four. Give an opportunity for we go back to page twenty four. Item number six. In reference to golf. Says the city will set fees and user charges for each enterprise fund. Such as a golf course at a level that fully supports the total direct and indirect cost of the activity. The proposed rate shall also take into account debt service coverage, commitments made by the city for the particular enterprise fund. I'll draw your attention to number five, the last sentence in that one. The city will review user fees at least every three years to adjust the effect of inflation, other factors as appropriate. I know that we've talked about this in the past, I think it's been several years since, I think it was probably at least three years since we probably looked at that. But I, but I understand that because we're a nine hole course and we have two eighteen hole courses in town. We're really between the rock and the hard place, if we can't arbitrarily just raise the fees. To try to make up what our cost would be, we have to take that into consideration for the council to move forward on something like this. For us to suddenly raise our fees to be competitive with the eighteen hole, we would lose revenue there, people just wouldn't use it, so. I want to bring that to the attention that I feel that we do need to address that, maybe affecting the first year. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so any, are there any questions on the revenue detail or the expenditure detail on the golf operations fund? Seeing or hearing any? Moving on to one twenty, page one twenty one unemployment fund resources. Not sure if you have anything to discuss there, Kyle, you want to go, you just want to touch tie level on how we fund this?
Yeah, so we self insure for L and I as opposed to paying L and I insurance premiums. And that has saved the city, this is a very beneficial move the city make, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure when the transition was made, but. But yeah, so history has shown that this has been very beneficial for the city to self insure.
You said L and I meant unemployment?
Sorry, unemployment, yes.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, our next page, one twenty two, medical reimbursement bridge fund. This is. To. I'll let you explain it, Kyle, it doesn't, it's, it's, doesn't equate to things in my private, my private industry world, so I'll let you. Let's go through the explanation of what it is.
So this was part of the transition to offer, you know, a different. Different array of medical insurance, and so how it works is, you know, let's say an employee has a three thousand dollar deductible. We have a mechanism called Viva Voluntary Employee Benefits Association. That is funded at three thousand dollars to cover that deductible and then any overage. Is covered by a medical reimbursement, so the city has a high deductible plan that they offer. So that costs the city less and the, the city has saved a considerable amount in. Going with the high deductible plan and having this bridge in place to cover any of these overages. Versus having, you know, your, your Cadillac plans, as they call it, that are incredibly costly. And don't necessarily kind of. Get the full use, this is actually, you, you're reflecting actual use a lot better. And it's saving the city money in the long run by having a high deductible plan with this as an offset for, in the event you, you do need to use it.
Just gonna make sure, all these questions we have last, I think are partly for the benefit of our, our community who's, who is engaged watching and. Reloading some things, so thank you for that. Our next, page one twenty three custodial fund, state of Washington collections and remittances. Obviously, it's an auditor thing. And we don't really have any say in this one.
Correct, so basically this is what they call a pass through, so this used to be housed, you know, in specific funds. As, you know, pass throughs for collected taxes that aren't, they're considered non revenues. And so the auditor made the determination that we do need a separate fund to isolate those from, from each. Individual fund, so that's the reason for these, what they call custodial funds.
I barely knew, started last year. Alright, so now we're into the appendix, appendices. Which really, the capital facilities plan, which we went through at the last meeting, we will be having the public hearing on that shortly. We get into the fleet rotation plan is after that on page one thirty, and I've kind of skipped way ahead. There's a great summary in here with, with some equipment, I didn't know if anybody had any specific questions on fleet rotation. Since we're here, again, a lot of that was in capital facilities plan. Anything on fleet rotation? Okay, next section after that is our asset management capital improvements, again, a lot of this was discussed during the capital facilities plan. Using our asset management software, helping us predict the maintain, maintenance projects. Out in the future in this coming year is what we're going to need to repair and maintain in our facilities. Do they have any specific questions on those, again, most of that was in the capital facilities plan? Okay, the next section, page one thirty seven, planning engineering building services fee schedule. If there are any questions on how those are set, and this will be the, the go to on that one. Is there anything you want to mention at all on these? Because this is, what, what's in our binder was effective January first twenty twenty.
That's right, there, there are no, there are no changes proposed for this year.
And I assume we will be looking at, obviously, we won't start into the, I hate to start saying twenty twenty three budget, but. We'll probably need to be taking a look at this as well.
Absolutely.
We're getting close, guys, we have page one forty nine, proposed recreation program fee schedule, no changes from last year. These are the fees that we charge for shelters. Rentals, fees with our partners with camps for the kids and whatnot. Have any questions on that section? Great, moving on. Then we have our, again, page one fifty, fee and tax schedule proposed for twenty twenty one. Um then we have our, again, page one fifty, fee and tax schedule proposed for twenty twenty-one for with regards to utility taxes, licenses, admissions, um chart uh charges, um franchise fees and whatnot. I don't recall there being anything changing on these. If there is, somebody jump in incorrectly, but I don't believe we had any changes for twenty twenty-two. No, okay. And again, our our binder still has the twenty twenty-one. We'll be continuing those into twenty forty-two. Uh we do have the next, the Parks and Arts Commission Strategic Plan. Lena went over um a lot of what's in there and what the ask is for for next year. I don't believe she is still on with us. Don't see her. Are there any questions on the strategic plan for Parks and Arts Commission? Kyle, now we get into lift and tip. Is there anything you want to go through on this? We are on page one fifty-five. This is always the fun part.
Absolutely, so um yeah, we will, we update this. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I asked Todd to put the three minutes.
The three minute on Kyle.
I will make it brief because we are going to spend a lot of time on this in the spring. And so this is another, so we do an update to this budget and to this resolution every single year with updated eligible projects. Uh and so we will have a workshop or two uh in probably early spring to do a deep dive into TIF and lift and uh answer anybody's questions about that. So this, so what you see here uh was adopted back uh in, I believe, early spring, late winter of twenty twenty-one. So we'll go through this process again for inclusion in the twenty twenty-three budget uh with any updates proposed uh probably February, getting into March, I would say.
Just again, Kyle, if you could, for the for the public's use and knowledge. I'm just kind of do a high-level reminder of the met, what we put in versus the matching product process and uh how all that works.
Yes, so we have a tax increment financing district that is part of Spokane County's uh local infrastructure financing to our lift program. And so we are partners with the county, so we have uh Fire District, County General, and and some other partners that will identify that all contribute to this boundary. Then the boundary includes um the, so north of the river, north of I ninety, there is some undeveloped ground that is included in this Spokane County's portion of the district. We also have the River District within the boundaries of the City of Liberty Lake that is included in this as well. So a portion of the increase in property tax for Liberty Lake goes directly to this TIF district for inclusion in this. What we see you know, the on page one fifty-five, you see a city match includes TIF total of a million dollars. So the the district, once we reach that million dollars with our different partners, the state throws in a match of a million dollars as well. So this is a phenomenal program for the city. We have absolutely been able to take advantage of this uh for um for all uh any manner of of infrastructure projects that benefit, you know, obviously not just the city, it's it's a community use and Spokane County um benefits from it, the Fire District benefits from it, the schools benefit from it. And so it's it's a community. I would say it's a community financing tool would be a better way to put it. It is not just Liberty Lake putting into this. It is a kind of consortium or a a group of uh stakeholders that contribute to this, that get a million-dollar state match uh for us to go after these infrastructure projects.
Thank you, Eric. Yeah, uh thanks, Kyle. Really like to point out for the benefit of the citizens that that uh Orchard Park. We would not, in my opinion, we wouldn't have Orchard Park if we didn't have this fund that we're able to tap into because to build that, for the money that we put into Orchard Park, uh we would have had to come out of general fund and a lot of different places. So thank God, we've got that to draw. Back to citizens, we have that to draw.
All right, anybody have any questions on the on the tip and lip uh outline here? Okay, not seeing any. The next is was our resolution um for
That's all all part of our TIF resolution updates.
I wasn't speed reading fast enough. Okay, and then the the back to the rest, we've got um this reiteration of our general fund, uh this is revenues. So we've got revenues after that, and then the forecast. Now, I know, Kyle, you've been doing some different iterations of our forecast. I didn't know if you wanted to go through those tonight.
Um I'll entertain any questions. I can certainly pull it up. Uh if we do have any questions, I didn't include them in the budget. We can certainly discuss how we want that forecast to look going forward in different inclusion. So I'll uh entertain any questions if we do have any on the forecast.
So forecast is on page one sixty-eight, if you guys are looking for it. It's on the second, second page to the end. This makes a lot of assumptions as Kyle has in here. But no questions on forecast? All right, now our last page, wow, our last page in the budget binder um were just special notes for the forecast for twenty ten, twenty twenty-one that goes with the spreadsheet. And since I didn't see any other questions. We give you one last chance, guys, or then we'll wrap up the budget review. We'll have a public hearing um here in a little bit. All right, I see a hand, Kyle.
So at some point, and we can do it now, uh there are changes to the budget that I have noted kind of throughout our process that I'd like to identify and get council approval on to formally change before we officially adopt the budget on December twenty-first.
So typically in the past, what we've done, Kyle, is we put those up um in front of the council um on the screen, and we take them one by one. We take a motion. Um we second it and vote on the change, and we just make our way through that. So then we'll have the clean document for the twenty-first. Do you um prepare to go through that now?
I do not have a, I I don't have a presentation prepared for. I just have them listed out. I guess essentially to verbalize them, and so. Okay. There are not a lot, but essentially what it is is, so so when we go to adopt the budget, we'll need a a clean version of the twenty twenty-two proposed budget. Uh we have in, I I hadn't put a number on the twenty twenty-two budget ordinance. I do need to include that, so I'm going to update page twenty-six. That's the adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget to include the actual ordinance number. Then on page thirty-one, I do need to.
Kyle, do you need us to actually?
Yes, let's go one by one and do that, yeah.
So um with anybody like make a motion that page twenty-six for the ordinance number of the updated to reflect the uh appropriate new ordinance number when we go to approve the prove the budget at our next meeting. Somebody want to? Thank you. So we have a motion, first motion from Councilmember Fuller, and we have a second to update that document to reflect the ordinance number. And a second from Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? Seems like a pretty easy one. Hearing any on favor of allowing Kyle to update that ordinance number accordingly, please say aye. Are you opposed? All right.
Page thirty, oh sorry, page thirty-one. Uh updating the ordinance for the property tax levy, essentially a kind of a parallel to our last. I need to populate that number on there. Um everything else uh is the same as originally proposed, so I would be including the ordinance number and the updated passage date on page thirty-two.
Yeah, I was going to ask that clarifying question. It's already passed, so you will basically include the fully executed document, and this is what you're asking for? So I, so if someone would like to make a motion to for Kyle to substitute page thirty-one and thirty-two with the executed document, we'll take that motion. There's a motion from Councilmember Fuller. Do we have a second? A second from Councilmember Seavers. Any discussion or questions? Not hearing any. Are you all in favor of make substituting that executed document? Please say aye. Missing a couple, is any opposed? Right, so just to make sure we have um Mayor Proten, Councilmember Fuller, Councilmember Kurtz, Councilmember Seavers, and Councilmember Langford all in favor. Just give me a thumbs up if you want. I was missing a couple voices. Thanks, guys. Motion passes five zero.
All right, page fifty-five, we have the kind of the breakdown of the police department and position summary and total FTE positions. I do need to um update. I'll give everybody a second to get there. Uh so towards the bottom for twenty twenty-two change, we have police officer listed as fourteen. Police detective listed as one. We do need to change police officer to thirteen and police detective to two. Total FTE positions is still the same, but just clarifying that change.
Well, um you lost me. I'm going to try to summarize, but I think you lost me a little bit. So um let's just go down the twenty twenty-one number. So chief of police is one still, I'm assuming. Police records, recent record records clerk is, I'm sorry, this is for twenty twenty-two, police records clerk. This goes from one to two for twenty twenty-two. Or goes from twelve to, did you say thirteen? So then it would be to change police officer in twenty twenty-two to thirteen. Police sergeant is two is correct, right?
Correct, yep.
Or one for police lieutenant?
Correct.
And then police detective is two?
Correct.
Yes, if someone would like to make a motion that we adjust the police officer full-time employee from fourteen and thirteen and adjust the police detective full-time employees from one to two, we'll take that motion. From Councilmember Fuller, do we have a second? A second from Councilmember Kurtz, any discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor, say aye. I got all five eyes that time. Any opposed? All right, motion passes. What's your next, Kyle?
Page eighty-eight and eighty-nine.
All right, read one.
Yep, there's a real estate excise tax, one, capital project fund. We applied for a TIB grant that we felt comfortable that we were going to get. That was not the case. So I do need to update uh our line items here on both eighty-eight and eighty-nine to remove that grant.
So do you need to give us specific numbers to for this motion?
Uh so in the amount, yeah, so us uh so TIB state grant. Uh we would like to remove from REIT one fund three-ten in the amount of nine hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred dollars.
Right, so I'm I'm going to rewind you. What number in the twenty twenty-two proposed column are you changing from what to what?
Okay, so it would be uh the, so account or bars number would be that three-three-four. On page, sorry, on page eighty-nine.
That's okay, three-three-four oh three eighty-ten?
Correct.
We take from nine fifty-six two hundred to what?
To zero.
Is that the only change on that one?
That is correct.
So we have a motion to change the twenty twenty proposed amount for fund three-three-four zero-three-eight-zero-ten from nine hundred fifty-six thousand two hundred dollars to zero. Then a motion from Councilmember Fuller. And from Councilmember Langford, any discussion or questions? I'm hearing any. All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, who did you say second that one? If I, that I don't write down, Councilmember Kurtz, I believe. Thank you. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero. Is that the last one, Kyle?
Oh, we have two more. So page ninety-eight. So we have fund three nineteen. So two changes on here. I'm going to change the name Henry to Kramer. We're also going to uh include the full cost of construction in twenty twenty-two. And so I I'm regurgitating a little bit here. We're we're trying to recognize the full cost of construction in twenty twenty-two, even though we might reconcile some in twenty twenty-three. But the full cost of construction to be reimbursed by lift is two-point-three million, and so I would like to update this figure to reflect that. So what, so for page ninety-eight, changing Henry to Kramer updating our uh total amount for uh capital outlay in the lift reimbursement to two-point-three million even.
So it's changing from one, one-point-seven-two-two-eight-hundred to two-point-three. There is a feeling on that page. Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to correct the name on capital project fund three nineteen from Henry Road to Kramer Parkway and adjust the capital outlay dollar amount in twenty twenty-two proposed from one point one million seven hundred twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars to two million three hundred thousand dollars each. Let me cut out, you have a second. And a motion by Councilmember Fuller, saying second by Councilmember Langford. Any discussion? Hearing any? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passes five zero.
All right, last one, page one twenty-four. The twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-seven draft of the capital facilities plan.
One oh four.
One twenty-four. It's the uh appendix tab.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yep. Uh so Lisa provided an update to everybody. Uh kind of a streamlined version of the capital facilities plan that I would like to replace with the existing one that you see uh in your budget binders. So that would be, yeah, so that would be replacing the the draft that we have in the current one with the updated one that Lisa provided uh for pages one twenty-four through one twenty-nine.
Can I just add to that, Kyle, real quickly, that um you want to, you want to replace it with the amended uh version. Uh it was amended as based on the November thirtieth council meeting.
Perfect.
Do you have um updated date on on the document that we can use? Or just reference it as a doc, as discussed during that?
As amended on November thirtieth.
So we will include that in the documentation.
Love it. What are good reasons? These revisions. Uh okay, so we have a motion to replace the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven draft capital facilities plan with the one that was reviewed and um amended during the November thirty-thirtieth meeting. Trying to look at my calendar in my head. You have a motion?
Can't do it. So moved.
Councilmember Fuller, do you have a second? Right, now a second by Councilmember Kurtz. Any discussion? Comments? Sorry, not hearing any. All in favor of the replacing the capital facilities plan with the the updated version from November thirtieth, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, I just have it five zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Kyle.
So during our next meeting, we will be voting on and praying we pass it. In all, all the years here, no, we've never not passed one, so we'll see, alright. So we have gotten through our workshop discussion, we're onto general business.
General business, very good, thank you, Mayor. On the general business, consent agenda, motion to approve November sixteen, two thousand twenty one city council minutes. Item two, approve the November thirtieth, two thousand twenty one, special city council meeting minutes. Item three, approve the December seventh, two thousand twenty one vouchers, the amount of hundred and twenty one thousand, three hundred eighty four dollars and eighty two cents.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Pro Ten Kennedy, is from Councilmember Seavers, any discussion?
Yep.
Go ahead. Councilmember Seavers, was that you?
Uh, sorry, I was saying, yeah, I seconded it.
That's right, so, okay, that's, I'm hearing the discussion, all in favor of approving the consent agenda items one, two, and three, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I have it five zero. To action items.
Action item, thank you, Mayor, B, action item one, motion to authorize the purchase of two variable message boards.
You have a second?
Second, second.
Second by Councilmember Langford, I'm assuming there'll be some discussion on this, Jen, if you are, if you ever want to talk about this request.
Yeah, so this was something Stephen was working on before he left. It is for public safety or for the streets work, basically when they go out and they do lane and traffic control. They are required by law to have these signs, and now that we're doing a lot more of our own traffic control, we have this need. We also are able and capable of using them for any COVID messaging, and also because it's public safety, we can use COVID dollars or ARP dollars for that. Are there any questions?
I don't see any. I'm not seeing or hearing any questions, all in favor of approving the purchase of the two variable message boards, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alright, not hearing any opposed, motion passes five zero.
We're good, thank you, Mayor, action item number two, motion to authorize the mayor to sign page fourteen of the pre-construction portion of the contract without construction company.
Second.
You have a second from Councilmember Kurt's? Any, I'm assuming there'll be discussion on on this one, Lisa, I don't know if you wanna give a high level, I know you touched on it during the city minister's report, so what this is, that I don't know if you had anything to add, or if anyone had any questions. Councilmember Fuller?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Ooh, so you or me? Bad feedback, question on five point one, point seven, point two, page thirty of, two pages. It says, to do a contract sum will be paid by the owner with each payment, I just wanted to. Sales tax on the project included in our total cost bill.
So, yes, we will be responsible, the sales tax will have to be included in that guaranteed maximum price. That portion of the contract is just a draft at this point, we don't have the dollar amounts, we don't have any of that, but yes, we will have to pay sales tax.
It was part of the budget, perfect, my second question is on the next page.
You just cut out completely, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you just said.
So, sorry, next page. Six point two point one, talks about material and equipment delivered and suitably stored at the site for subsequent incorporation, talks about progress payments. So we, just so everybody understands, that how I read that is, if something is delivered to the site. Will be, will be accepting of paying for it, whether it's installed or not, is that a true statement?
So for the, for the material costs, so yes, so that will be, and that that'll come back to you in terms of those mini GMPs where we're purchasing long lead item, uh, long lead item materials. To get them in because, so, so basically when they're delivered, yes, we will pay for the cost of the equipment. But we, but the installation cost will be addressed at a later, when there, it's actually installed.
Okay, perfect, and the last question if I can, and then I'll be quiet and give it to other council members. I haven't, I might have missed it. Who in our team is going to verify completion of the progress payment?
So that's, so I'm gonna be responsible for the sign off on those as I am for other capital projects.
Perfect, thank you.
Questions? Not many, all in favor of authorizing signature of page fourteen of the pre-construction portion of the contract with Baton Construction Company, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I'm not hearing any opposed, motion passes five zero.
Thank you, action item three, motion authorized the mayor to sign parametrics task order twenty twenty one dash zero six, the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars.
Wait a second.
Second.
A second from Councilmember Langford. Any discussion or questions for Lisa on this one? Okay, not seeing or hearing any, all in favor of approving the task order twenty twenty one dash oh six, please say aye.
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 I'm missing a couple voices, any opposed? Not hearing any, motion passes five zero.
Action item number four, motion up to approve the lodging tax advisory board recommendation, two thousand twenty one to two thousand twenty two, authorize the mayor to sign the agreements, maybe. Agreements, they become available. To win that.
Kevin made that change after you got. We have a second from Councilmember Seavers, I think. Alright, and questions? Mayor Pro Ten?
Yeah, question, um. I'm a little surprised that we didn't have some more individuals who asked in the past for this, but because we have the money, we certainly want to give it out. And I know the hub is, has always been on the list, Coata's been on the list, and Rotary. On it, so as we move forward, I hope we can now maybe find some additional organizations that could benefit from this.
I think the farmers market sometimes would put in for it. So yeah, I was, I was surprised as well, the lack of applications.
I wonder about the, or Christmas lighting? By the day. All right for this.
Hollywood.
Yeah, I think.
Look at the, for the next year.
I, oh, sorry, I can expand on that a little bit, and so I did reach out to several nonprofits that did not apply. And I did receive some feedback that they had already gotten the funding necessary through other, you know, PPE, law, PPP loans, other mechanisms that made it so they actually did not need to apply for these funds. For twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, which is a little surprising, I would imagine that that we're gonna return to increased interest in this. For our next go around would be obviously the hope, so.
You see, they would restrict the, or your party lighting to apply for this? I don't know.
No, no, they could, yeah, they could absolutely go after this, and others, I know in the past, so. Winterfest, I believe, has applied in the past, and Liberty Lake Tax, so, so the theater has applied in the, so I've reached out to them, and so. Winterglow did receive ARP funding, so that may, may have. May have been a reason why they didn't go after funds this year, may, may pursue those next year, so.
If you recall, three years ago, they, Winterfest did come to us, but they got their application in late, so we weren't.
Oh, you're right, that's right, sorry, yeah, so yeah, they were actually, I apologize, they applied, but they were not funded, so.
And then when they said they were gonna apply the next year, which been last year, did not happen.
Correct.
One of the issues, yeah, one of the issues was at that time, is that they were not involved in the city of Liberty Lake. That was a concern moving forward.
Correct, yes, so how, how can they show that they're, you know, contributing to beds in Liberty Lake? I must, I would imagine would have been potentially a stretch for them.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. Alright, any other further discussion or questions? Not all those in favor of approving lodging tax advisory board recommendations for twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, please say aye.
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 Alright, I still keep missing some voices, so I'll just double check, any opposed? Alright, not hearing any, motion passes five zero.
Action item five, authorized the mayor to sign parametrics task order twenty twenty one dash zero seven for topographic survey of the Trevitt project, the amount not to exceed twenty eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kurt's, any questions? Or comments on this task order for Trailhead? Not seeing any, okay, all in favor of authorizing the parametrics task order twenty twenty one dash zero seven, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Then, okay, motion passes five zero. Alright, we are to public hearings and appeals. Oh, that's right, I forgot, we, we did, we added, so what I guess is functionally ten C. When we updated the council rules and procedures, we added the item for council comments, so forward will have this, is, I'm assuming it will become. Item eleven and everything else will shift down, so this is a time for council comments. No, Mayor Pro Ten was to kick us off, have you got any?
I do, yeah, not so much comment as I would like to add to our, to the church effective, you know, we can start looking at this from January one, and I'd like to add to that. One, is I've requested a workshop, looking at city hall expansion, what can be done here? Two, workshop for library, I know, I'm just gonna say workshop for library, and three, workshop on the lodging tax advisory board. Just to maybe look at that, how we can streamline that a little better than what we had in the past.
Okay, so.
That's all I have.
Okay, so we've got requests for workshops on possible city hall. Invite the tax advisory board in library.
Library, thank you.
So we'll, we'll add those to the list for upcoming agenda items or upcoming workshops, and we'll figure out where we can get those in. Kelsey, you have any questions on this? Okay. Anybody else, Councilmember Kurt's?
Um, what Mr. Kennedy just said reminded me that, I think that some of the. Boards and commissions that we have, if we need new volunteers or whatnot for those, if we could do that sometime, maybe early in the year to kind of get. People shifted around, if people wanna volunteer or wanna be done with their commitment, I know Mike is on a lot of the boards and commissions and stuff too, so. Just wanna throw that out there, maybe for one of the meetings in January.
Well, I'm kinda seeing, I, I, I was going off on a different direction when you started talking, so you're talking about the, the boards and councils and such that the city council can have representation on. Right, we'll add that as well. And Council, you have a friend too?
Yes, I, that, Councilor Kurt saying we're bringing that up, and we just received a letter, and I got a copy of it because I'm on the. The.
STA?
STA, I got ARP in the right, the STA, we know. They, that'll come up with the first part of January, they requested that we advise them by the twentieth, that who would be assigned to that, and they also had a position there as an alternate.
So, Kelsey, if we can add, maybe we just do one, do one workshop, maybe if we could fit it in the first meeting of the year? To just discuss advisory board. Representation on advisory boards by council, something like that, so we, and we can, between now and then, we can, we can go through the list of which ones we need to, to respond to. Okay, thank you, anybody else?
Mayor?
Councilmember?
Yes, Mayor?
So I don't, Councilmember Langford?
Yes, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. For doing a great job on the twenty twenty two budget.
Thank you, it was, staff did an awesome job, and thank you guys for being diligent with your questions, and I think we got through it pretty smoothly this year, so, great job to everybody. Alright, and there's no other council comments, I will add that, make, need to make sure, and you're part of our twenty, our December twenty first meeting is service awards. Recognitions, all those things, so I wanna make sure that every, everybody on council is hopefully planning to be there. So I guess we are moving now to. Public hearings and appeals, so number eleven A is our twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven capital facilities plan public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and. Give a little bit of an instruction, this is the opportunity for the public to weigh in on the capital facilities plan as amended after, during the November thirtieth meeting. You'll have an opportunity up to three minutes to comment on the capital facilities plan, and we'll put that countdown timer on the screen. So if you wanna make a comment on that, CFP, as we lovingly call it, I'm gonna go ahead and raise your hand in Zoom so I can see it, or let Todd Henderson know in the chat. And we'll call on you, somebody go ahead and open the, the public hearing at eight thirty four PM. Are you getting anybody yet?
I don't know.
No? Okay. You'll let everybody noodle on that for. About a minute until Horizon tell me, it tells me it's eight thirty five. Speak now forever, hold your peace, everybody in the audience, love to hear from you. Jen, are you seeing any, nobody? Okay. Alright. The minute goes really slow, and you're ready to go to check out. Alright, we'll go ahead and close the hearing on the. Capital facilities plan with no comments at eight thirty five. Alright, now we're moving on to, we don't have any resolutions, we do have two first read ordinances, Kelsey, more on.
Okay, so first we have ordinance number two eighty three, which is an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven capital facilities plan.
Do you have any questions or comments from the council on that first read? Obviously, we had a lot of discussions on it over the last several weeks. Alright, Kelsey, go ahead.
Secondly, we have ordinance number two eighty four, which is an ordinance of the city of Liberty Lake, Washington, adopting a budget for the period January one, two thousand twenty two through December thirty first to two thousand twenty two. Appropriating funds and establishing salary schedules for established physicians.
This is one last chance for the council, have any questions or comments on the budget? Not seeing any, okay, now we'll go ahead and move on to, we don't have any emergency ordinances, introduction of upcoming agenda items.
Kelsey, do we have something for the screen?
Yeah, Todd, if you could pull up the matrix for workshops.
Thank you.
And Jen, on there, I've, I've just added the advanced agenda to that same document.
Perfect. One second, everyone.
There we go.
Alright, so.
Alright, so it looks like on December twenty-first, just to be clear, it doesn't look like we have anything at six PM. Correct? Going once, seven o'clock, it doesn't look like we have any workshops either, we do have special presentations and other things that evening. So if that looks right to everybody else, the twenty-first will be a night off of workshops. Yeah, I second what Phil's doing, very good. Alright, and thank you, thank you, this, this is very helpful for staff, especially now that we have those council comments, that's a great spot to to add any additional and upcoming agenda items, it's very helpful to staff, thank you.
Well, and I apologize, everybody, for getting so close to the computer, so then our first meeting in January is on the seventh. My rec, my suggestion, obviously, weigh in, your opinion too, is by then, we do have the vacant council seat discussion, do we want to do that at six? I don't know if it'll take up the whole hour, or do we just want to save it for seven o'clock, because we do have these other items, workshops that people have requested that we should probably address fairly early in January, including the, most importantly, the advisory, the, like, the advisory boards for the council members to participate on. So is there any opposition to adding that to workshop on January fourth? I think we will.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah, to, A, I'm asking, you know, do you guys want to do a workshop at six for the vacant council seat discussion, though I don't think it'll take an hour? Or put it at seven, and my suggestion was also going to be to add the workshop on the advisory boards that the council may want to sit in on at that meeting during a workshop as well, because, like you said, we need to have answers back to some of these organizations fairly soon in the year. Mayor Proten.
I recommend we do it at seven o'clock.
Both of them?
Yes.
Is there any opposition to that? Alright, so like, we'll have two workshops then on the fourth, does that work for everybody? You have that, Kelsey?
Got it, thanks.
Okay, and we'll look at the other ones that are added at our next meeting, see how soon we want to stick those in there, I'm real quick for Councilmember Kurtz, on the, I know you had a small committee that was trying to get together on the social media policy, do you have any idea when you might want to bring that back for, even if this is a short update?
Um, I think we're looking at meeting on the twenty-seventh, I think that's the date we narrowed it down to, it's kind of busy with the holidays, and I was out sick all last week, so I apologize for not getting this done sooner. But I think that either by the first or second meeting in January, we'll have something to bring back to the council.
Okay, so if we can make sure we add on this workshop list update for the social media policy discussion, and so Councilmember Kurtz, if you feel like you'll be ready for even just a little bit for the fourth, we can add that, if not, we can put it up in the following meeting.
Okay, great, thanks.
Alright, so we're done with upcoming agenda items, and we are back to citizen comments. Again, if you have a citizen comments, you'll have up to three minutes, we'll have a countdown timer, either raise your hand here on Zoom, or send a note to Todd Henderson or meeting manager via chat, and you'll have your up to three minutes to make your comments, not seeing any hands at this point. Give people a little bit of time here. Alright, Todd, anything on your end? Okay, so it looks like we don't have any further citizen comments, we have no executive session tonight, and unless we hear any, any objections, we want to, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Gotta roll.
Have a great night, folks.
Everybody, Tuesday, for the city administrator. Open house, we'll let you know where it is, thanks, guys.